Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for May 16th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have four items on our agenda, the first being approval of the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes from April 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll have Alderman Butch look take number two as I'll be abstaining.
Class A combination license renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And on to number three, reserve Class B combination license renewals, which are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And last but not least, number four, Class B combination license renewals. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourned by the call of the Chair. We're going to give just a couple of minutes here in case there's anybody
Yes, I think the answer is yes. I don't know what my... Oh, you were wrong. Yeah.
Council Meeting for May 16th. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman Aaron's absent excuse. Please rise for the posting and the colors. Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for May 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Monell. And any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have two presentations, the first being the Police Week Proclamation, if I could entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Burquist and Allen. All those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation so reads, "Whereas Congress has designated May 15th of each year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar year surrounding it to be Police Week, this is a time to honor the memory of those officers who sacrificed their lives in service to the public. And whereas more than ever, our nation depends upon local law enforcement as our first line of defense, and it is important for citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and challenges of our law enforcement officers and agencies. And whereas we applaud our law enforcement officers for recognizing their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas our citizens value the courage and devotion with which our law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. Whereas on Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we express our gratitude for the selfless public servants who wear the badge and put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe, and we pay respect for those who've lost their lives in the line of duty. Now therefore I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby recognize May 15th through the 21st of 2022 as Police Week in the City of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation by flying their American flag at half-staff in honor of all fallen officers." And with that, well, that's a great transition for our police chief to take over for the West Bend Police Department Police Officer Awards.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to stand before you and recognize just a few of our wonderful officers and employees that serve the citizens of West Bend every day. Tonight, we have three awards to hand out. The first one, unfortunately Officer Tamara Cheek cannot be here tonight, but I will read you the summary of her meritorious service award. On February 10th, 2022, Officer Tamara Cheek was working the mid-shift and assigned a civilian ride-along, who was interested in a career in law enforcement. Officer Cheek and the ride-along conducted a foot patrol in a city park. While walking, they came upon two deceased people with apparent gunshot wounds. Concerned there still may be a threat and a suspect at large, Officer Cheek provided clear direction to the civilian ride-along to get her to safety. Officer Cheek coordinated responding officers to begin a search of the park, as well as to ensure the civilian ride-along was taken care of. In the days and weeks following the incident, Officer Cheek has kept in contact with the ride-along and frequently checked in both on and off duty to ensure the ride-along was still doing okay. Officer Cheek's professionalism during the incident and compassion following the incident are Meritorious Service Award. On February 10th, 2022, the incident just described, dispatcher Wendelborn was the solo dispatcher working. When Officer Cheek radioed that there were two deceased individuals in the park with apparent gunshot wounds, it was believed that this was an active shooter situation and there was a suspect at large. This resulted in a large-scale law enforcement response with over 20 officers and several medical units responding. Dispatcher Wendelborn maintained a calm demeanor, relayed pertinent information to responding units, and managed accountability of all resources on scene while still handling all other calls for service in the city. During the response, a vehicle was located in the parking lot. Dispatcher Wendelborn recognized the plate and the vehicle from an investigation from earlier in the day and relayed that information to officers on scene, which assisted in identifying the deceased victims. Dispatcher Wendelborn's composure and ability to manage multiple tasks at once greatly assisted officers to manage the investigation. Next, Community Service Officer Matthew Corona. Another meritorious service award. On May 29th, 2021, Community Service Officer Matthew Corona was off-duty shopping at Fleet Farm. CSO Corona had previously work experience in retail as a loss prevention employee. CSO Corona observed a man sitting in a parked vehicle outside the Garden Center. CSO Corona noted the man continued to look around and appeared nervous. A short time later, CSO Corona observed a second man push a cart full of power tools into the Garden Center and out an emergency exit toward the first man in the vehicle. Both men quickly unloaded the power tools from the cart and into the vehicle, got in the vehicle, and drove away. CSO Corona alerted store employees and recorded the vehicle's license plate and direction of travel. The store employees recognized this was a retail theft in progress and had contacted the police. The vehicle was stopped in Jackson and over $1,000 in merchandise was recovered. Both men were arrested and convicted. CSO's quick action and willingness to get involved off-duty ensured the suspects were apprehended, held accountable for their actions, and property returned to the business. Congratulations.
So, great job to all those that we honored here tonight. And of course, just thank you to our whole Police Department dispatcher team, our fire EMS team. You know, we are truly blessed here in the City of West Bend to have such an awesome and support such a wonderful Public Safety Division. So, thank you all for your service. And with that, I will recess the Common Council to Public Works.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. We have the approval of minutes from May 2nd, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, permission to bid Regner Beach renovation contract. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, John. And thank you. This evening, we would like to begin by providing the Common Council with some background information relating to the Regner Park swim pond. We hope this information will help with the swim pond discussion this evening. Annually, we hire approximately 20 lifeguards and several beach house attendants who operate the swim pond in Regner Park. In recent years, the department has struggled to hire and train lifeguards. For the 2022 swim season, the starting salary for our lifeguards has moved up to $15 an hour. In 2021, that starting hourly rate was $11 an hour. Currently, for the 2022 season, we have received one applicant and we have six returning lifeguards for this season. Lifeguarding in Regner Park has many challenges. Many people do not want to guard in Regner because the pond does not have clear water like a swimming pool. The lifeguards also address other issues in the park such as unruly kids, park patrons that can somewhat become disorderly at times. The guards locate missing children that wander off into the park, into the woods, and around the playground areas. They provide general first aid. Generally speaking, they are somewhat park supervisors, park patrol, et cetera, et cetera. So, those lifeguards in Regner Park are asked to do a lot. Additionally, many parents don't want their kids guarding in Regner Park. I've heard that from multiple parents, not recently, but in the past. May 13th, last Friday, this topic became somewhat as a public discussion, you know, with the memo for Common Council, things like that. There have been many comments on social media and lots of different ideas, things like that. Since last Friday, when this became kind of a topic, we have not received one applicant for a lifeguard in Regner Park. If someone would like to apply, they can do it online 24 hours a day. They don't have to do it during regular city hall hours, things like that. I was kind of hoping maybe this would generate, the discussion would generate some more interest. Unfortunately, it has not. One suggestion is that we pay a higher hourly rate for our lifeguards. Our Recreation Division is required to operate as a Recreation Enterprise account. No tax dollars are used to pay for direct recreational costs, which includes labor and materials. Annually, we need to generate enough revenues to cover recreational operation, recreation operational costs. This includes the Regner Park swim pond. Our attendance in 2021 was down. The 2021 financial loss for the Recreation Enterprise account for the swim pond was about $35,000. We lost $35,000 last year operating our swim pond. That $35,000, again, that's our lifeguard salaries, our beach house attendants, and our recreation supervisor that supervises all, and then supplies for those lifeguards. That does not include park maintenance staff, does not include cleaning of the building, building maintenance, water treatments, utility costs, anything like that. It does not include any of those grounds maintenance activities. It only includes the Regner Beach operations. As I noted, in 2021, our numbers were down, our attendance numbers were down. 2020, we did not have any swimming because of COVID. So, on an average year, 2019, we lost $20,000 in Regner Park, just for the swim pond operations. With the new increased hourly rates for our lifeguards and increased operational costs, again, for 2022, if we could open, we would anticipate a loss of $35,000. The Regner Swim Pond is a quality life feature that was constructed 90 years ago. This feature does not generate a profit, nor do we break even on an annual basis. This is nothing new. This has been ongoing for many years. It's just the gap is getting bigger now wider. We have reviewed several alternatives with the City Attorney and Administration. Swim at Your Own Risk is not an option with our current pond design. Currently, our pond is zero-depth entry, so you start at zero. There's no drop-off like a swimming pool, zero depth, and it gradually gets deeper to 14 feet deep for the diving well. Excuse me. This pond, the Regner Park pond, is man-made and offers a high-level liability if we open at Swim at Your Own Risk, as it is right now. The City Attorney feels that the pond is changed to a three-foot-deep waiting pond. We can operate with a Swim at Own Risk policy. Local lakes and natural bodies of water do not provide the same type of liability. Closest ones are Lake Sandy Old County Park, we have Yar Park, we have Lake Lenwood right down the road, things like that. Those are all natural bodies of water. They are not man-made. They do not control water levels or anything like that. Regner Park was man-made. We keep it to a 12-foot depth. Every couple of years, we dredge that out to keep that depth for the diving pond. We conduct water treatments there. We manage that swimming pond, not a pool pond. So, it's not a natural body of water. So, again, that's kind of the big difference. You look at a state park like Pike Lake versus our pond in Regner Park, the liability there is different. If we do not have enough lifeguards for 2022, the pond, as suggested by the City Attorney, will remain closed and drained for the summer. Again, just the liability issues. We would keep the splash pad operational with no staff for 2022. The new beach house, or newly renovated beach house, would be operational with exterior restrooms open to the public. The beach house would also be open for, as a facility rental. We have a community room in the back and some patios on the south end of the new building. On an average, we, every day, we take phone calls from customers looking for rental facilities exactly like what we're building in Regner Park. Once that beach house is open and operational, we have our furniture in there, things like that. Swim pond or not, that building will be getting used by our facility rentals. We're also looking at putting rec programs in there in the evening hours with our back, again, community room we have there, and the way the design is, we would have new restrooms on that part of the park open all the time to our park patrons, something we've never had before. So, the beach house, if we do not open this year, will be used to some extent. Won't be used for concessions and things like that, but it would be used. In an effort to provide the community with a swimming venue in 2022 and beyond, our department is requesting permission to bid a contract to renovate the swim pond in Regner Park. The new pond configuration will be, again, a zero-depth entry with a maximum depth of three feet. The projected work, excuse me, will include filling the diving well with dense material and compacting it, modifying the pond drain. We have a pond drain at the bottom of the diving well, and hauling in additional sand and grading the pond to a maximum depth of three feet. The proposed three-foot maximum-depth waiting pond would allow our customers to swim at their own risk. We would not charge a daily swim fee, and we would use, we would allow the use of swim toys and other floats and things like that in a pond, anywhere in the pond. Right now, we only, we only allow the family swim area, we only allow toys in that area. Why is that? Because it'd be, swim toys and lots of kids, we need to heavily guard that area of the pond, the amount of people that are using it, things like that. So, with the new pond configuration, be Swim at Your Own Risk if people want to bring toys and fun things like that. We would welcome that. In this scenario, the beach house, in the scenario where it's filled to three feet, in this scenario, the beach house will be operational with staff selling concessions, swim toys, possible rentals of water toys, and supporting the facility rental rooms. We would also be there to provide general first aid. We would train those beach house attendants as we do now, general first aid, CPR, things like that. And the splash pad would be operational, and we would have staff on-site as just general security, certainly not police officers or CSLs or anything else like that. But we would definitely do, you know, some walk-arounds, things like that, just to make sure our customers are being taken care of and acting appropriately. The Engineering Department has been working diligently the last couple of days, last week, surveying the existing pond, providing us with cost estimates and specifications for the proposed project. The pre-bid estimates for this work is estimated at $100,000. The quick timeline for the bidding process, tonight, permission to bid if the council deems that. We would look at going out then for bid, two adds, and have it back to Common Council June 6th for permission to award a contract. We would like to start the contract on or approximately at June 8th, and have the pond filled and operational by July 1st. We understand that Regner Park is historic and generations of our residents have many personal memories of swimming in Regner Park. We understand that. I also have those same memories. Our objective is to provide the community with an option for 2022 and beyond. So, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mike Alderman Allen?
Yeah, Mike, is there a sweet spot where we could hire? I mean, we've, we tried 11, we tried 15. Is there a sweet spot? Do we think, feel like if we went to 17 or 18 or $20 an hour, we'd get lifeguards? Do we know, have we figured out what that might be?
Our plan for this year was to hire new guards at 15. Returning guards would be making 15, 25, or 15, 50 an hour. And head guards, we would have at 17 and 17, 50 an hour. We always have two head guards that assist with scheduling, training, immediate supervision, things like that. As far as a sweet spot goes, I can tell you, other facilities in our area are charging, or hiring at the same, excuse me, dollar amount of $15 an hour. Not a comparable, but yes, a comparable, but even our park, our summer seasonal employees, for our park staff, we're hiring them at $15 an hour. We have not filled 50% of our positions. We were going to hire additional seasonal employees to help out with lawn mowing, things like that. We can't find them. We need to go out for bid for our lawn mowing contract again. That's increased by 105% this year, our mowing contract, because we can't find anyone, and neither can our contractors. So, again, a little bit different than our lifeguard situation. But again, these are positions about that $15 an hour, the juniors, seniors in high school, the freshmen, sophomore in college, that's kind of that, that window of, you know, that staffing person, that, that's what we're looking for. Kewaskom, they're not opening their swim pond. They can't find any lifeguards, zero. I called up there, they don't have a lifeguard, nothing. They're not opening. Hartford sent out a notice last week. They're going to have their outdoor aquatic center open, but areas of it closed. Literally, every day when you show up there, they're going to have a list of what's open, what's closed in their aquatic center. Same scenario where they did a large community fundraiser to build that aquatic center. They just can't physically find the people for that. With the Regner Park, I, to be quite honest with you, if we start at $17 an hour, would that make a difference? I don't think it would. I just, our numbers over the years, over the last couple of years, it, we've struggled, struggled to find lifeguards. We really did. So, that's just kind of, it's not just our reality. Cedarburg Police Department, they've closed their lobby hours.
Yeah, I suppose, Mike, there's no reason to think this is going to get better next year.
No. No, one, there's, well, there's lots of concerns, I guess, with this. We don't have swimming this year in Regner Park. We don't have lifeguards. How are we going to find 20 brand-new guards in for next year? You know, so it's just...
It's going to get worse.
A little bit of a snowball effect. You know, we had 2020 off because of COVID. Well, everyone had 2020, everything was closer 2020. So, to carry those guards from 19 to 21 was a little easier, I guess, than with this, you know, this, you know, particular situation. So, and again, I mean, I, I know, I understand this topic. I live it every day. As far as not having enough staff and, you know, the thought of swimming or filling the swim pond to three feet forever, I understand the concerns, the questions, the comments, you know, the historic value of Regner Park. I do. I, I get all that. I'm trying to weigh that all out. I'm trying to also come up with an option for the community, for its governing body, you know, that, I, to be honest with you, I just don't want to close something and walk away from it. You know, I'm trying to come up with an option.
Right, right. And if you don't mind me continuing a little bit, I did get a call from a constituent today, and his concerns were, yeah, you, you put it all to, all to three feet, it's going to be different than it was before. And, you know, they talked about the history thing. And I think it's just important that people remember that this, this is it. I mean, we either close it or do this. This is really the only options. We've talked to the City Attorney about other possibilities, but then you get into constitutional issues. I mean, I don't, I'm sure you can talk about that, Ian, but this, this is really the only option. I, you know, I don't think anybody thinks this is the, the, the best I don't think anybody thinks this is the best possible thing. The best possible thing is for us to find enough lifeguards to reopen the way we normally do, but it's just not going to happen. So it's this or nothing. So that's why, that's why I'm supporting it, because I'd like to see, I'd like to see the park open today, this summer.
Any other questions? Alderman, Kayler.
Just a comment, and I won't support this at this time. I think this has come about way too quick. I mean, we basically got this notice on Friday, and here it is Monday, and we're expected to make a decision that impacts the entire community. I appreciate Mike doing his best to bring forth an option. My opinion is, we close it this year, we see what happens. We're making a knee-jerk reaction, do something that none of us know what's going to happen a year from now, and next year, come back and say, hey, we need $250,000, dig the pond out, we've got more interest, we've got more people. I just, I think this is way too quick. I think we need to take a year and let this settle, look at some other alternatives, but I can't support this at this time.
Any other questions? Alderman Allen.
Yeah, Mike, what's the possibility that we could back this out next year if things change and we, the labor market looks different and so on? Is it a case of another $100,000 to drag the stuff that we put in out?
Sure. So, again, I mean, I completely agree with some of Randy's comments and things like that, where is this just a knee-jerk, things like that, but part of it is also, if we delay it a year, then when next year in 2023, do we decide if we're going to open or not? Is it April 1 of 2023, and we try and put a contract together and get it filled, or April of, 1 of 2023? You know what I mean? I don't know. And to be quite honest with you, our seasonal employees, a lot of times, they don't fill out their job applications until May. They don't. And I was kind of hoping that we would get a little bit of an influx here. College students, sometimes they procrastinate about getting a summer job, and they come home from school, and their parents kind of push them into getting a summer job. We do get a flush of applicants, you know, normally it's one or two, three, something like that, but, so if we do push this off, I'll say another year, when in 2023 then do we have the discussion, do we fill it in or not fill it in? You know what I mean? It's, or, you know, November of this year, we have to make a choice. Well, by November of this year, we wouldn't have an answer for next year if we have guards or not either. So it's, it's not that easy, where it can just be, let's wait another year, let's wait until May of next year to decide, because then we'd still be kind of in the same scenario. We would have more time to discuss it before May of next year. We would have more time to get the bid package together and get that out, but still, we would be kind of stuck in the same location, same spot, same scenario.
So, so if we, would we be looking roughly the same amount to drag the sand out?
I would say yes, but it's going to depend, again, I mean, look at gas prices and everything else right now, where things are at, so, you know. Would we get a better price if we bid it out this fall, and we were looking at November, December construction? Yeah, probably would. Right now, Max and our engineering department, they've been talking to some of the local contractors about this possibility, and there was some, some interest in it, things like that. It's a quick timeline for a contract. It is. It's very quick. If we wait a year from now, would we have more time to bid it out for a spring project or early summer project? We would, absolutely. But we'd still have probably the same discussion, will we or will we not have lifeguards and, you know?
Alderman Dahlnik.
I have actually several questions. First of all, when did this become an enterprise? Was it always an enterprise operation?
I'm going to go back approximately 10, 11 years, something of that nature. The thought process behind it was not to utilize tax dollars to fund our recreational programming. That includes a swim pond, it could be tennis, baseball, basketball, anything that we operate, swim lessons, dance, our entire rec division, that's our full-time recreation supervisor, all of our seasonal employees, and all, all direct operational costs for those rec programs are all covered with our recreation revenues. So without the dirty ninja mud run, we would not be able to do that.
Ian, the three feet, is that based upon some case law or some doctrine, or how did you come up with three feet?
There's no, I don't know that there's a magic number for a depth. The three-feet discussion is, kind of goes back to, I would say, what, industry standard for what a zero-entry waiting pool would be? The concern is, without lifeguards you don't want, especially without, with the water such, you know, not being completely clear, you don't want a situation where it's, the depth is going to go over the heads of most of the patrons. The three feet is a reasonable depth, and keep in mind, it wouldn't be three feet wall-to-wall, it would be three feet in the deepest parts, so you would have zero entry that would go, you know, a good distance into the pond, essentially reducing the risk to a point where it's not, where it doesn't rise to that issue of, you know, constitutional protections.
Okay. Mike, have you ever considered separating the duties of lifeguard versus doing these security things, if that is an issue?
We do, what we have currently, under our current, current operational situation, we have lifeguards, excuse me, and we have beach house attendants. And our beach house attendants generally are in the beach house, taking fees for daily wristbands, swim passes, selling pizzas, general concession, things like that. Those, beach house attendants do do some of those walkabouts around the pond, they do some of that work, but with our lifeguards, the one thing we use our lifeguards for, if they're not up in a stand, or if we don't have them down resting, because we cycle them through, we do have them walking the perimeter of the water as an extra option, extra set of eyes when we're busy or on a focused area, if we have a lot of patrons in one area. So those lifeguards are kind of just automatically, I'll say, exposed to some of those other factors. When you're in a public park like that, as a lifeguard sitting on stand, you're going to have all kinds of people coming up to you and asking you questions or comments and things like that. It's, you're a city staff member, someone has a question or a comment, they're going to approach that lifeguard.
Have you considered sectioning off part of the pond to, so in other words, shrink the area of the pond through the use of floater devices or something? So you would need fewer lifeguards?
So what we do right now is, we have the entire pond in, let me, I just want to make sure I'm counting correctly, five different sections. We already have floats in those, separating some of the areas. The eastern one-third of the pond is zero to three feet, and that's our family area, that's where we allow all the toys and floats and games and balls and all that stuff. The other areas on the north and the south side, we have those sectioned off. So when we bring in school groups, we often have school groups and daycares and things like that that come, we'll put them in one of those specific areas. So again, instead of having 20 kids scattered over the entire pond, we put them here with one lifeguard over the top of them. So we can reduce the amount of lifeguards we might have. The family swim area, again, when it gets busy, we might, in the mornings, we might have one guard up as it gets busier, then we will go to three, just for that, that particular area. So that's kind of how we do it right now. On a slower day, we will ask people if they can move over, stay in one particular area. A way to reduce the number of guards we need, remove or do not install the diving raft. That in itself is two guards, when we're up and running, operational, but the swim raft is, again, kind of that feature that the young teenagers, or I'll say the 10- to 13-year-olds really enjoy. About 15% of our patrons probably use the diving raft. So to reduce the need for a number of guards, the diving raft would be the first thing we'd want to remove. We've talked about only opening part of the pond. Well, if it's 95 degrees out on a Saturday, how, we literally have 1,000 swimmers, how are we going to keep people out of the pond? That would be difficult to impossible, you know, for some lifeguards or beach house attendants. You know, where we only open half of it or something like that. So lots of different challenges.
Okay, and I'm sympathetic to the situation that you're in, Mike, but I have to agree with Alderman Kayler, this is an irrevocable step. Once we put the dirt or the sand or whatever it is in there, we're not going back, and I'm not comfortable with doing it as the immediate solution. I think it, as bad as closing it would be for the summer, I think it's the lesser of the two evils than, than what's being suggested. And the other thing, I think it's, it's bizarre that we went to the great lengths to restore the beach house and retain the architectural features of the beach house in recognition of its historical significance, and then we're talking about doing this to the pond. So I'm not saying it, you know, maybe ultimately it will have to be done, but I'm not comfortable doing it right now.
No, I completely understand. I do, I really do. I'm not suggesting this is an easy discussion item.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Alderman, go ahead.
And I would just share that the permission to bid doesn't mean you're filling it in, like literally filling the soil in. It would provide us with some additional information to bring back to you folks to make that decision more long-term. I understand that this appears fast. Mike and previous recreation supervisor, Nick Lemke, had been concerned about lifeguard numbers in the past and have been discussing this with administration and the possibility of, what do we do to, to continue to make, make ends meet even at budget time of last year? I did have conversations with several of you about that possibility becoming reality. We weren't interested in pursuing it for 2022, so Mike worked hard and did everything possible to obtain lifeguards for this swim season. In the 11th hour, we found out that as he's filling the pond, we're not able to secure those lifeguards, so a solution got brought to you as a potential. I understand if you don't take action to support it tonight, but if you do take action to it, know that that doesn't mean it's getting filled in, and our public should know that, that it's not being filled in today or tomorrow. First, we have to find out whether we actually will receive bids from a contractor, and the how much factor, I think, would be helpful for planning purposes for the future. Personally, I think it's good information to obtain, but would certainly respect the council's decision to not approve it. What will be your call?
Alderman Kayler.
Just highlight a couple of things. You know, Mike, we talked about a couple of options here already, possibly removing the raft, maybe downsizing, filling half the pond. So there proves that we have some options, maybe, that we haven't discussed yet, and just to me, we need some more time to look at this. And again, maybe it doesn't happen this year, but I think it gives us some time to look at some other alternatives and possible solutions, rather than just, let's fill it in and be done with it. So again, I, either way, I won't support this.
Hollerperson Kennedy.
Okay. All right, a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody here is here tonight because they want to talk about this. I'm just curious if anyone from the community came. I know there was a lot of chatter on Facebook. Is this the reason you came, was just this? Well, thank you for coming, we have one. I know there was chatter on Facebook about this, so I just was curious how many people took some time out of their night to attend, so thank you for doing that. Second of all, I do agree with Randy and Jed, this is fast, totally. I'm okay overall getting a bid, because it just gives us the option, if we want to go forward with this in two weeks, a month, whatever, at least it's an option we could put on the table for council, but I do think that there should be absolutely more discussion on filling in part, roping things off, and at least being really open with what our ideas are, what our options would be, and having a financial impact, et cetera, on that. So I don't necessarily have a problem with getting more information in terms of a bid. That's just my point of view, but I think more needs to be discussed. Parks and Rec Committee, I don't even think they've had a bite at this yet, which kind of is something, again, I think should be taken up before it's brought here, and I'm sure with timing, I'm not blaming you, I just think that's a piece of it. And then I do also think, you know, it is a big decision, there is a historical part, you know, we do see some chatter from the community, but, you know, making sure and understanding what does the community want, and things like that, you know, if it is the three-foot option, if it is closing it for a season, if it's filling in part of it, et cetera, I do think that, you know, hearing out more people or getting some more community answers would be important as well. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Ian.
I just want to speak to one issue with the bidding. Because of the size of the project, we have to follow the statutes, Chapter 62.15, which regulates how we bid projects. You see it all the time with road projects. The reason this is kind of moving at lightning speed to at least get the bids is because if we want to have any chance of opening this summer, we have to get the bids moving right away to comply with timelines. We, I think one thing that Mike did not specifically mention is the time involved in both draining and filling the pond, that it's a two-week process either way. So it's not a matter of, oh, hey, we finished...
Filling it with water, Ian.
Filling it with water, sorry, filling it with water. It's not a, it's not a matter of, oh, hey, we, we figure this out, let's fill it tomorrow. It's going to take two weeks to get it operational, no matter what you do, once any project, any decision is made. So that's, that's part of the theory behind it, is if we want to have any chance to move on with a project and have an option, that's why it came in a matter of days after initial discussions. It wasn't meant for a final decision, it was meant to get that information so that we can comply with the statutory timelines in order to move forward, if that's the decision that's ultimately made.
Alderman Allen.
Yeah, Mike, you mentioned that you had secured potentially seven lifeguards. At what level would you be able to operate the facility with seven lifeguards? Two days a week, or limited hours?
We would only be able to choose one area of the pond to lifeguard, and it would be very limited. With seven guards, it would be the east side of the pond, maybe one section on the south end, and that is absolutely it.
And that would, they suppose, taking out the diving well?
Yep. So again, to try and keep people out of the remainder of the pond, we can put up signs all day long, people aren't going to stay out, you know? If it's 90 degrees out and they're showing up in Regner Park to go swimming, how do we tell people to get out of the pond? You know, if it's a fenced-in outdoor aquatic center or outdoor swim pond, and you have a fence around it, you have your capacities, you sell that number of wristbands, that's it, you're at a safe level, you're good to go. Okay, two people leave, you allow two more people in. Regner Park, nothing's fenced in. So for us, again, to limit certain areas of the swim pond, okay, this isn't open, but this is, and all that, that becomes a mountainous challenge.
Alderman Dahlnik.
A quick question, Mike, it was, someone told me today that, do we, well, let me make it quick, do we charge to use the pond?
We do. Right now, we currently, it's a daily fee, it's like four dollars.
Do you get a wristband for that or something?
What's that?
Do you get a wristband to wear?
Yep, you get a wristband for it, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Mayor Jenkins.
Thank you for the recognition. I figured while everybody else was talking, I could add my comments here, too. I guess first off, I totally understand this is not easy, and it's very frustrating, and both as mayor and myself as a parent of five kids that, you know, definitely enjoy Regner and really, really want to use it this year. To some of the comments, you know, I, I'm fine with us at least investigating this option and getting what those prices are. It might end up being that it's just cost prohibitive for us not to act, and so I'm fine with us making that first step. I will note that when we originally were discussing this item, I did ask for it to go to Parks and Rec first for their discussion blessing, whatever it might have been. I understand the timing of it, and we're, you know, really in the crunch here, but I agree that that would have been procedurally maybe a nicer way to go at this. So I'll just say that I, I don't have a huge opinion either way, but I do think that I'd like to keep the, keep our options open and keep the pool open if we can. You know, we did just build, invest a lot of money, our community invested a lot of money in this beach house, and it would be, it would be disappointing if, if, if even at the end, we decided not to open up the pond, if we didn't explore every option that we have. So I'm fine with us at least taking this first step and going from there, so.
Alderman Burquist.
I always wanted to be last.
Go ahead.
I haven't said anything yet.
I haven't said anything yet.
I'm sorry, good, second to the last.
I just want to reiterate the fact that, again, I picked up on the same kind of issues that Alderman, how Person Kennedy says, you know, the timing is quick. I don't believe we've looked at all the options. I mean, I'm having questions of what kind of recruiting we've done, where we've done recruiting. Those things aren't clear. If there is an option or some other place that we can advertise, that we can look for people to, to staff, that continues to be an issue. We don't know how the community is going to come out of. You know, we're still coming out of a pandemic, you know, where people are still concerned with coming out and accepting jobs. I mean, you see it in every aspect of the labor pool, is that people are having those issues. So to think that that's going to be continuing on, I just think that we can probably take some time and look at other, other options. I don't have a problem with, as long as this is just advertising or getting permission for the bids to support it today. I guess I would reserve my vote when we come to awarding the bids, that we have discussed all the, taken into account all the things that have been said tonight, all the questions, all the concerns. Dot all the i's, cross all the t's, make sure we've covered every base so that the emails from people that are talking about tradition, that have swam in Regner since they were little kids and all that, that we give due diligence to what they're requesting. Someone to take time to send me an email. I mean, I guess I got to give them at least the benefit of the doubt to, you know, support that. So tonight, I'll be voting yes for the permission to bid with the reservation that if things don't change as far as the conditions, that my vote will be no if it comes to that point. Thank you.
Okay, my final comment is I'm really, really hoping that we can get this thing settled. I certainly would not like to see it closed like Q. Oskom had to do. I mean, there's a lot of people upset regarding this. But maybe this is what we need. Maybe there's, the public is going to be able to say, by the way, hey, we need to get some lifeguards down there. We want that pool open. Maybe there is a blessing that this has come forward at the last minute. Because I know there are people out there that probably could fill those spots. But in the meantime, I think this is the only alternative we have. We can put out bids out there, and it'll give us a little more time, give you us some time, possibly maybe to find some alternative that will work so we can at least open it, if it means open half of the pool. I would rather see that done than completely shut it down and not have anything down there, because we have a beautiful facility down there. Regner Park has been one of the nicest parks in the state of Wisconsin. There are people from all over that come to Regner Park. And I hate to see that just sit there idle during the summer. So I'm going to be in favor of having you get bids and hope and pray that we will be able to find enough help that we can at least open that for this summer. I know it's going to be a little, like, as you mentioned, if it does go through, it'll be sometime in July before that's actually going to be open. So, okay, any other questions?
Just one, I'm sorry, John, just one, just one last question. Just how long have you been working for the Parks Department, Mike? And then follow, follow up with, how long have you been thinking about this issue and considering all options?
I've been with the city of West Bend Parks for 23 years. We have been talking about modifying the swim pond for... Honestly, it's been back and forth probably the last 15 years. 15 years ago, we did a feasibility study for Outdoor Aquatic Center. At that point in time, a lot of these discussion items came up back in 2010, 11, and we constructed a splash pad in '12. It was the last time we modified the Regner Swim Pond to the condition it's, or the shape it's in today, things like that. At that point in time, we talked about eliminating diving well, moving the diving well, all kinds of different options at that point in time. So one other side note, I guess, for the 2022 discussion is my guess is when we come back to this, if we get permission to bid this evening, we go out for bid, we come back for future discussion, permission to award or deny, by that point in time, I would guess that we will not have any more lifeguards on our staff for this summer. Because if I'm 20 years old, I'm not going to sit around not working this summer. So I would assume most of those people are going to find jobs elsewhere. I'm just, again, just another factor, another discussion item, so. We would actually hire them for our park maintenance staff, because we need, we need people there, too, so.
Great, are there any other questions? There are none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
And good evening once again. We are calling back to order the council meeting. We're on the consent agenda. We're going to pull out item number three and item number six. So if we could have a motion to consent items four and five, please?
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you.
I thought I heard somebody say second, sorry.
All those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. And first, we'll have Alderman Butchlick take number three for me, please.
Item number three, Class A combination license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. And we're on number six, permission to bid the Regner Beach renovation contract. If we could have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Model. Are there any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I would like to ask for a roll call vote, just so we have it for sure, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burkwest?
Aye.
Alderman Kaler?
No.
Alderman Dolnick?
No.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
I have it five to two.
Thank you. All right. And thank you, Mike, for all your work. I know it's not an easy decision or easy discussions, but we wish you best of luck. All right, and then we'll go into our closed session item number one, entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to state statute, Section 19.85, Para 1E, deliberately or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is for the developer's agreement with Menards. Yes, Model and Alan, thank you. And if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burkwest?
Aye.
Alderman Kaler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Air, correction, Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
We are on closed session.
Thank you. We will be returning from closed session shortly. Thanks.
[Crosstalk] [Crosstalk]
And we are back in open session. Onto agenda items for consideration. Number two, resolution approving an amendment to the project plan and boundaries of tax incremental district number six.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Alan. Oh, I'm sorry, am I on the wrong spot?
You're, I think you missed-
Oh, yep, 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 you're right, you're right. Thank you. Ignore that. We're on number one, which is reconvening into open session for possible action regarding developer's agreement for Menards. Thank you, guys.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Model. And I will note that we do have, along with our team, we have a rep from Menards here as well, if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, any questions, comments? Then, all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we're on to agenda items for consideration. Number two, resolution approving an amendment to the project plan and boundaries of tax incremental district six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Dolnick and Alan. Any comments on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, ordinance for zoning amendment ZPU-22-001 to extend the existing PUD planned unit development overlay district to the west for the expansion of the existing retail store, Menards, at 575 West Paradise Drive, and the tax key numbers are there.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Kaler and Dolnick. Yeah, there's no discussion on this one. All those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, ordinance to permanently zone ZA-22-002, approximately 21.4 acres of land located on the west side of Wildwood Road and north of Schuster Drive from TMP Temporary to I-1 Institutional and Public Service District and RS-1 Single Family Residential District by Bud Abel of Shepherd of the Hills. We'll have a brief presentation by our planner, Jim Ranky. Take it away.
Good evening. So this is the permanent zoning for the recently annexed lands up on Wildwood Road. This establishes the permanent zoning, so we're acknowledging the church use for the I-1-